You're joining us in the offices of the Eastern Daily Press. We're here in the newsroom and I'm joined by the Conservative Leader of Norfolk County Council, Cliff Jordan. Good afternoon, Cliff.
Good afternoon.
All right, Cliff is going to be taking your questions. We've got a whole stack of questions you've been sending in to me over the last 24 hours or so and on our Facebook page and website as well. We've got as many of those together as possible and of course we're going to be taking your questions as we go along as well. Just make sure you drop us a comment below and we'll get through as many of those as we can. Now Cliff, we've had far too many questions that we could ever get through, as much as I'd love three hours in your company to get through them all. I don't know how well we get on, but we're going for about 20 minutes, half an hour, see how we go and we'll get through as many as we possibly can. If we don't get to your question, I do apologise in advance, but we've had far too many, which is never a bad thing. We're just going to go through the ones that are the most relevant, the ones that are county council relevant as well, because some of the questions we've had are a bit district council related, which is, it gets a bit confusing about which council does what, but we won't get into that right now. But Cliff, if you're ready, we'll crack straight in, shall we? Okay. All right, we'll start with Michael Smith, who's asking about the NDR. What is the overspend on the Northern Distributor Road and how are you going to pay the bill?
Well, the overspend is something that's a bit flawed at the minute because there's claims coming all the time for this and the officers are dealing with that now. So, an exact figure I couldn't give, but I always did say, I mean personally, when you do a fixed price, there's always claims coming in back and that's not nice and it's not a nice thing to know. How are we going to pay for it? Well, the road's there, we've got to pay for it and there'll be various means, going to the government to get some figures out of the LEP. You just, honestly, we will have to pay for it because I think it's really a good thing for Norfolk to have that.
And also it's, well, the building work's already well started, I guess you can't leave it half finished.
It's close to finishing.
Yep.
I mean, next year it finishes.
Yep. You say you can't give us an exact figure, I will ask a follow-up question on your behalf, Michael. Can you give us a ballpark figure?
Well, I personally, I think it'll be round about the 200, 205 million. That's what I think.
And the initial was sort of 170, 180 million, that sort of ballpark, I believe?
Yeah, but that's what I've always thought, because I, I mean, if you have a price and finish, so in other words, they give a direct price for a finished article, that would have been up and around that figure anyway, I believe. So I always think personally, that's the figure I set at the time, I still think that. I still think, and I've no knowledge to tell you that's where it'll be, that's my personal view.
Okay, well, plenty of questions coming in, we'll start getting on to some of those in a moment, but I'll just stick to some of the ones that were sent in beforehand. Just to remind you, if you just join us, we're joined by Cliff Jordan, the Leader of Norfolk County Council, for a Facebook Live here from the newsroom here at the Eastern Daily Press. Keep your questions coming in and we'll get through as many as we can. Next, we'll go on to homes and homelessness as a general topic. This is from Harry. I would ask Cliff, why are they agreeing to build more and more homes when the infrastructure isn't there? Roads in the city need to be bigger, schools etc, it's not good enough.
Yeah, well, if you're talking about the city, you're talking about Norwich City Council's responsibility. If you're talking about, because they do the roads within the city under an agreement. But if you're talking generally with Norfolk, which I'll deal with generally with Norfolk, personally, I think that there's, and we have, we are looking at a policy change to put infrastructure in before housing, because it's totally unacceptable just to keep building houses onto existing infrastructure and then you get queues, 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 and in the end, you get through everything, get completely bunged up and I personally get annoyed with that and I can't understand why other people can't see that, you know?
So you're wanting there to be a definite shift to actually...
Yes. I think infrastructure needs to go in before housing till people can understand where the roads are going to be, how the roads interact with existing infrastructure and to the services so it can be well thought through and then put the houses further.
Okay, we'll move on to some other questions now. We've got questions coming in here from Heather, Helen, Daniel, oh, we've got plenty of people. I'll get to as many as I possibly can, if my computer wants to update, which it doesn't seem to want to do. I'll get back to that in just a second, I will get on to your questions, move on to some of the ones that were sent in beforehand. Next, we've got a question from Nigel. Hi Nigel, if you're watching. What are you going to do with the children's centres, a much needed service, you should be investing and not cutting?
Yeah, well, I was quite interested to see that we were going to be cutting children's centres. The thing with the children's centres is that what we asked actually the professionals, how the services need to be provided for the future. And these ideas of having hubs, where the children's centres, libraries and other things all together in a hub, makes sense when you, when you think about it. The funny thing is, they can do it much less than what it costs now. And people say, ah, well, of course, that's what you did. No, it isn't. What we actually asked was, where can you make savings, how you can make savings and where, the focus should be, the professionals come up with this. And that then goes to the committee, for the committee to either agree or disagree. And that makes, then comes through to P and R, would their recommendations for budget? And that's how a budget is formed.
But do you get why people are worried? Because if things are marked for closure, even if they're going to be moved into a different hub or a different setup, do you get why people are so concerned and worried about things that are on their doorstep?
I do, but the funny thing is, people's lifestyles are changed, we're all changed and our lifestyles are different, yet the service they think should be the same. Well, it won't be, services have changed to fit your lifestyles and the provision of how, it'll be changing as well to fit all lifestyles. The fact that it'll be cheaper is better for us because we can get more services. So, we're not going to get more money into local government, that's questioned, we're just not going to. So we've got to use what money we have got better and try and provide as much service as you can for the money we've got. And where you can provide more service for the money you've got, brilliant.
Okay, let's get back to the screen and go through some of these questions. Daniel, if you're still watching, there is no conspiracy here, I'm getting through as many as I can and this laptop is being slightly temperamental, so there is no conspiracy, I'm getting to these questions as and when I can see them. Right, let's go to, also Jake is asking, where did you get your shirt from? I'm sure it's a very nice shirt. But we'll, we'll move on from that.
What, do you want one?
Quite possibly. All right, the name has disappeared from my screen, but there was someone a moment ago asking about mobile phone signal, I'm sorry, I can't see your name now. A lot of Norfolk's still not having great mobile signal, what more can be done about that?
Well, funny you say it, with the digital committee you were sitting this morning, we are actually, one of the priorities we've got in Norfolk, although priority in Norfolk, is better broadband and better mobile signals. The way, we were talking a little minute ago about lifestyle changes and how things are changing, the way that you do business worldwide now is via internet, you, you don't just do landline any longer, you do mobile phones everywhere, so everywhere needs to be improved and we are genuinely looking at doing that.
I can hear what people are saying, even though they're not saying it, looking, what does looking mean and how does that actually turn into something real?
Well, there's 5G, there's all sorts of other stuff coming through, the technology side. I'm no whiz on technology, I have to listen to other people who are. And it's moving so quickly, I mean, what we're talking into there is not much of a camera, it's a, Sam Gravy. I mean, things are moving on quickly and the signal, we really have got to up our game here in Norfolk to get right at the front of the curve for good mobile coverage on telephones as well as the internet. I always call it a motorway in the sky, not on the ground.
That question was originally from Claudia, I've now been able to find that question because I have a computer that works, which is deeply, deeply exciting. Thank you for that, Claudia. Move on to some other questions from Margaret. This is again going back to children's centres. Given that extensive research has proved that early years intervention is highly cost-effective, does it make any sense to target children's centres for cuts?
Well, that, I thought I dealt with that, but we're not targeting anything, this is the professionals who are saying they can provide the centres in a better and more targeted fashion for those that really, really need it. I agree with you about early intervention. Families that need help should get the help early, it prevents a lot of problems further up the road, so yes, I do believe in that. And looked after children, numbers should actually decrease if we can help families.
Okay, well, we'll stick with children, this is a question from Helen, thank you for this, Helen. Please, can I ask what's being done to safeguard children's mental health and what's being done about the hundreds of children out of school for mental health reasons? There's not enough provision for these children, what is going to be done?
Now, this really is a specialist area and I'm not going to speculate on that at all, because there is things that are going on, but it is a really specialist area and I think that mental health, full stop, whether it's in children or adults, has been underrepresented right across the board.
Okay, we'll move on to another question, I guess if it's one you haven't got the personal specialist information for you, frankly, you may as well, may as well sub.
I don't want to say things that wouldn't be appropriate because they really are looking into this. It is, that and dementia is one of the things that we are really pushing the boat on.
Okay, let's go to a question from Daniel online here, hi Daniel. Why are there mountains of cuts to services, yet such a rise in council tax in the county?
Well, the council tax is all part of the funding of the county council budgets. One of the things, a lot of people don't gather this, but the government does not have to have a balanced budget every year. The council does and it has to have a balanced budget. We don't print our own money, so we can't balance it. Our money comes from various elements and the government are squeezing our proportion to what we get. So collectively, we still get an awful lot of money, 1.4 billion overall, but that has to cover all the services and therefore you have to balance everything out in a general term. What we're trying to do is not cut services. The services, I think you'll find, at the front end, the people who deserve it are more targeted, but they're still there. The costs, I'm hoping that we can get the costs down to, and I said earlier, in some cases where we can get more service for less cost.
Not easy though.
No, it really isn't easy, it's a real headache that people say, you know, well, you should do this, you should do that. You try and do it, that's like your own budget, you only have so much coming to your household, well, that's what we've got and we've got to deliver as fairly as we can right across Norfolk.
One thing I'll ask personally off the back of that, I know when we've spoken in the past, you've been wanting to go to the government and say, look, we need more, is there, is there any realistic chance of that happening? You know what your figures are, you know what the budgets and services and so on are, is there any chance of the government sticking their hand a bit further into their pocket and helping out?
Well, if they do, that means, like us, they'll take it from somewhere else to give to us. That's what it means, because the country is still in a deficit overall, you're not in the black, we're in the red overall. So, in straight arse to you, I really hope he does see that we are at the end of, you know, we're really juggling.
Yeah.
And we really are juggling and we're doing the best we can, because the people here are important, people in Norfolk are really important to me anyway. I don't know what they are to him, but I would have thought so, and the people in his area are just as important. And the effect that these, the austerity has had is really tremendously damaging, really.
Okay, well, just if you're just joining us, we're in the Eastern Daily Press newsroom, joined by Norfolk County Council Leader Cliff Jordan, who's taking your questions online. We've got plenty of questions that came in before on email and social media as well. I'm getting through as many as I possibly can, going to the questions as I see them on screen, so there is no, there is no agenda here. I always say that, I go through as many as I can and try to get a good cross-spread of questions. Let's go to one about the incinerator, which is something that's of particular note to people in the west of Norfolk, the aborted plan for a waste incinerator in the King's Lynn area, which is a question that still rumbles on, the eyebrows raised, it's one you've taken on before, I know. This is from Ingo, who says, why did you stop a free investigation into the mistakes made during the incinerator saga when we could do with 34 million right now?
Yeah, well, the 34 million, wouldn't my idea to pay it, for a start. That was done from UKIP and the Alliance decided to pay and stop the whole thing going forward. Having said that, I think there was a cut-off point because the Secretary of State at the time didn't make the decision when he should have made the decision, therefore let the project can go forward.
Well, with the greatest respect, I think Ingo's question was more about a free investigation into the mistakes made, was there such a thing going ahead?
Well, I think there was about four investigations on everything that happened and all they wanted to do was to go round and do it again. And at some time, you have to draw a line under all this, end story, move on, life goes on, we're three years away.
Okay. We've had a question in from the Wasby women, they're the ladies born in the 50s and waiting extra six years for their state pension, it's an ongoing campaign. This question comes from Debbie, who says, would the Wasby women be allowed to address the council?
Well, I don't know whether our constitution allows that and the truth is, I don't know, would I mind them addressing the council? I don't know what they think they'll get from the council, I don't know what they think we can do about their pension, I mean, to me, it sounds more like government.
Well, I know it's a case a national government have been involved in, but I think they're just trying to push their campaign at, for anyone of note who'll listen, I suppose.
Well, I think you really ought to hire a load of buses and get all the Wasby women and go down flood London and stand there and chant at them, because that's where that's going to happen.
Okay, let's go to the screen here. Adrian says, simple fact is, we all know that the main government is no longer going to provide funding to our local council because we're not important to them, so we know our council will have to make cuts, sadly ones they might not want to keep but can't. Is that, I'll just push on from Adrian's question, a touch there. For you as a politician, is it very, very difficult when you're looking at a range of services with not enough money to pay for them all and having to work out where the axe is going to fall? I mean, personally, is it very difficult?
Yes, and not only is it personal, that all councillors are faced with the same thing, they don't know what party they're in either. What you need to look at is the services we provide, what are they for? And usually, people say, well, for the vulnerable, well, the road services are not for the vulnerable, it's for everybody. And it's proportion of spend on the road, because the safety of the road is important. Then you've got the vulnerable side and then you've got proportion that against everything else that keeps everything together, keeping the glue together. So it is difficult, it's a matter of balance. And believe me, all the professional officers who bring things forward as savings that they think they can deliver without affecting, our instruction was not to do the best as possible to affect the service, the front end, the delivery of the service. You might need to target the tighter for people that are real vulnerable instead of in general terms, but it's about people. This, the council is about people, it's not about the councillors or anything like that, it's about people and getting the balance right. People are lactose to do this work and we take it very, very seriously.
Well, if we just, just remind it for people who don't speak local council, because there's plenty of people who don't speak local council, if you will, 125 million pounds of savings over four years, that's the target, isn't it? We've been going through so many years of savings, so much stuff has been cut to the bone or, where on earth can those savings come from?
Well, there's got to be a mixture and there's no question about it, it's a mixture. I did touch on it a little earlier, but lifestyles have changed and some of the services that were provided, you're no longer requiring the form that they provided and therefore the services that are required don't cost them much. But it's finding them, it's like everything else, keep searching and balancing one against the other, all the time, it's about balance.
Could I guess what people are always going to say is, they want specifics?
Very difficult to give you specifics because they want me to say, we've got to cut this and we do that, but I can't say that.
I can hear the people at the other end of their lens, that's exactly what they're saying right now.
Yeah, but I can't say that because what happens is, the suggestions come forward, we're in a committee system. If we were in a cabinet system, I'd be able to, but we're in a committee system and the suggestions come forward and then that goes to the committee. The committees then decide whether or not, yes, that's appropriate or no, it isn't. And then it comes through to the P and R, which is in January, February time, to full council, so it will PR full council.
Okay, question asked, question answered. Let's move on to Paulie, who's asking about cuts, hi Paulie, if you're watching. How does he justify his salary when the police force, health service and schools and public services are struggling?
Well, I'd be pleased if you could suggest what salary I get, because at the moment I don't get one. I get zero, I don't get a salary. I do get an allowance and for that allowance, I have to go and look after people within my division, I don't get any mileage to do that, there's a number of things to pull on that, so the truth is, I don't get a salary.
And a question from Steve, which follows on that quite well. With all the cuts coming, what sacrifice is he and other high-paid managers going to make and what percentage has his last three pay rises been? Well, I guess part of that's already been answered by not getting a salary, but I guess what sacrifices can the other managers make?
Well, what sacrifices do people want? I mean, what do you want? Do you want the services, therefore we have to employ people? Or don't you want the services, therefore we all have to employ people?
Let's move on to Nigel, who says, why don't they sell off some of their land to pay for health slash childcare?
Good question. The difference, if we sell off the land, we get capital, the childcare is revenue, you cannot use capital in revenue.
Right.
What we have to do is, if we sell the land, which we are doing, we sell the land, we then have to buy something that generates revenue, to use the revenue for the services, hence why we're trying to get a portfolio together, we call rent and development, to get things built, houses to rent and things like that, so we can generate an income to use for that.
Okay, well, just to remind, we've got a few minutes left, we've got about another five to 10 minutes left, we're with Cliff Jordan, the Conservative Leader of Norfolk County Council, who's joining us here in the newsroom here at the Eastern Daily Press. I told you this time would fly by, doesn't it? Right, let's move on to some other questions here. Well, Ashley follows up very quickly on the questions about capital and revenue, why can't capital be used for revenue?
That's the way the government has dictated, that's the way it is. We can use revenue, when we charge council tax, that's revenue, so that can be used for services. Capital, we can't transfer capital into revenue, but we can if we've got too much revenue, that'd be the day, but if we've got too much revenue, we can transfer that into capital, that's acceptable, but in another way it's not.
So it's just the rules you have to work.
That's the way the rules are written.
Okay, Ashley, I hope that answers your question, I, see, I got to it as quickly as I could. Right, Marcus says, will you start closing Norfolk libraries in the coming years? Libraries are always a touchy subject.
Well, libraries are close to my heart anyway, because they're what I call a fountain of knowledge, but that, that changing, your lifestyles are changing. Years ago, when I was a kid, all they supplied was libraries, that's all they did and you had to be quiet how you went in. The one we used to go to, down Church Street in Deere, you had to go, that's all knocked down, no flats, there, that's the way, that's again how things have moved on. But today, there's a provision of IT, all sorts of things in the library. It's developing the library service for today's lifestyles, that's what it is about. It's not about shutting libraries, people find it on this possession of shuttiness, it's about changing things that the services that the council provide to meet today's world. Today's world, have you seen, when I was a walkabout as a kid, you never ever had a mobile, you used to have to find a kiosk to make a telephone call, don't know if anyone can remember that. Today, they all walkabout looking at a screen, I mean, it's completely different.
The world we live in, but the, the question was, will any shut?
I can't say none will shut, but I would very much doubt, they'll change, certainly, they'll change.
So, options are still on the table, okay. Let's move on to some other questions here, let's go to, how are you going to generate more money? That's one question that came in earlier. The council, I know, has looked in the past at finding ways to generate money, whether it's using things like the former RAF Colchester, buying that as a potential moneymaker in the future and other such places. How can the council maybe be a bit more, well, a bit more forward-thinking, generate more of its own cash when it's not through tax?
Well, that's what I was talking about, the rent and development, rent and development company. There are other ways, it means that the council has to go into business, in a basic, I mean, the council is a business, but it has to go to, to earn some of its own income to help to provide the services for the public, that's what it meant. Breckland, at Breckland, we did that years ago when I was leader there and now that earns more money from its commercial enterprises than it does from charging council tax. We're a long way from that here, but that, that type of thing has got to do more and more. The problem you've got, again, is about, again, a balance, because then the independent sector will say, well, hang you on, you're coming into our end, what's the public sector doing in our areas? It's a matter of balance again.
Just return to libraries quickly, Mary has asked, what about mobile libraries?
Well, that's another thing, mobile library, you can, and I use this as well, I have to say, it's the technology on my iPad, I've got all my libraries on an iPad, I don't go to the library now for books, I don't need to mine an electronic, so you can download them. Lifestyles are changing.
But I guess a lot of people do rely on the mobile library in more remote areas.
Well, some do, some don't, but so many people use them as you think they do. I don't know all the up-to-date figures, but I was quite surprised how many, in some villages, only two or three people get on and other villages, maybe one.
Yeah.
I mean, it just depends. They're something, I think, of their time and I'm not saying they've got to be stopped immediately because they're not, that isn't what I'm saying, but what I am saying is, lifestyles are changing, you'll find them, technology will take over from a lot of that.
Okay, just a couple of minutes left before we wrap this up, because we've had so many questions in, Cliff. We'll go to Kay, who asks, how many jobs are going to be cut from adult education?
A fair amount, where, I don't know of any, but again, that comes through, the adult education is moving and transforming into a bigger picture, so no idea.
Okay, well, we've had a few questions about homelessness, Leanne, who says, no mention of homelessness, I know we had a few questions in about that. My understanding is that largely coming under a place like the city council, more district rather than council responsibility.
That is district responsibility.
Yeah, okay, so that's why we haven't come under that, so maybe something if we get the Norwich City Council into doing something like this in the future, we weren't ignoring you, Leanne, but I hope that covers that off for you. And you know what, I think we're coming up to time now, we've got time for just one more. We were talking earlier about the committee system, about how decisions are made, a committee rather than a cabinet system. One question Ashley asked a moment ago was, how can people influence the committee that decides where cuts are made? I guess that's what people want to know, how can they influence decisions?
Well, on all committee agendas, there's a place there for public questions, so I suggest you write in with a question for whichever committee. Follow the council very closely on its website and you'll see all the committees, all the relevant committees and send your questions in and you then get a supplementary question if you come and hear the answer to your first question, you get a supplementary through about half.
And do you find that the committees really do listen to those people?
Oh, yeah.
Or is it just lip service in a way?
Yeah, I know, all the cynics will say, no, of course they don't, but actually, they do listen, they genuinely listen. People matter and we're a people organisation, that is what we are.
Well, I've been in some of those committee meetings and you see when the public questions come, people can be so eloquent and make their points so, so well, you can, you can see the impact it has on people. We'll go to Cathy quickly, we've just got a minute or so left. She says, stop turning our villages into building sites, if we wanted to live in towns, we would buy in towns, our village life is being crippled. So I guess that's, that's looking at the development planning.
I agree with you. The problem you've got is big villages and they come serve as centres and then they, they then attract a certain amount of development. Again, this is a district issue, not a county issue, but I fully understand that. I've often said that all villages, if all villages in Norfolk took five houses down all lanes, you'd have a job finding them, that would not change the village at all, but lumping everything together in the centre starts bringing it into an urban area and I disagree with that.
All right, well, I've broken my own rule because we've already just hit one o'clock, I'll chuck one more question in, because we haven't mentioned... I'll chuck one more question in, because we haven't mentioned broadband yet, and we had quite a few questions about broadband, this was from Anne, if you haven't got broadband, good luck watching this, because I don't know if Facebook Live would cope without broadband or decent wifi, sorry, that was a bit of a low blow, I do apologise, "When will we receive superfast broadband in Welney? We never seem to get any updates, communication's been terrible on the status of the rollout."
Well, basically, for Welney, I have no idea where you are in the programme, but I will ask the question, I hope you've got the contact details there, I will try and get somebody to get back to you on that, because that's specific to your area.
Well, if we, if we look at the wider question about the, the rollout, are you happy with how it's going, or...
Yes, I am happy how it's going, but I did say earlier, we want more, we want a better deal overall, because we're looking at about 90-some-odd, 95, I think, of this percent coverage, I want 100% coverage, and I want it all to be fast broadband, and I want people wherever they live in Norfolk able to do business worldwide.
Shoot for the stars and all that, well, it is one o'clock, we've done our half an hour, we could go on for quite some time. Cliff, did you enjoy that?
Yes, I did, thank you very much, I really did enjoy that, that, that go rather quick, that's the quickest half an hour I've had for a long time.
Yeah, and we had one, we had one comment about your shirt, no one complained about you not wearing a tie, which, which I thought we might get a complaint about, and no one mentioned your hair either, are you quite upset about that?
Well, yes, because there was one person going on about my hair, and I thought, hello, he must be bald, he wants me to have a haircut so he can have a wig.
The fashion accessory to have for Christmas, you hit it here first, Cliff Jordan, thank you very much indeed, thanks everyone so much for all your comments, your questions, we took the rough with the smooth and everything in between, and I can imagine we can do this again sometime.
Lovely.
Lovely, thank you very much indeed.